Okay. Thank you for that. I would like to call the committee of the whole budget meeting of January 16th, 2019, to order. Again, I'll read the safety notice, because we've got different peoples here. In the event of an emergency, please evacuate council chambers to the nearest exit through the chamber doors, located to our left, the brown ones. Please see the clerk, Julie, would you raise your hand? So in the event of an emergency, we're going to follow Julie. Outside, once you evacuated the building, please gather in the front parking lot outside of the town hall in the northeast corner. There's a sign that says gathering point. I'd like to thank the public for attending this evening, and I just want to remind everyone of our rules for engagement, to be respectful while others are speaking, and please refrain from clapping. Delegations will have five minutes to speak, and we are asked to stay focused on the agenda items. And I'm going to repeat that once more. We are asked to stay focused on the agenda items. So if you have a question, state your question, no long soliloquies or soapboxing. Please remember to silence all your cellular devices. Roll call of council, Council Brunet gives his regrets because he's at the West Lincoln Memorial Hospital meeting tonight, but he's going to try to join us if we're still here. But let's try to wrap it up before he gets back. Staff are in attendance this evening, welcome. Declarations of interest, are there any declarations of interest from committee? I see none. There are no statutory public meetings on the agenda, delegations, we have none consent agenda. We have none. So diving into our regular agenda, we are now considering item 7.1, capital budget review. Staff, in this case, our illustrious C O, Mr. Kirkopolis, will be providing a presentation on this topic for our listening pleasure. Mr. Kirkopolis, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think members of council as well. So your senior management team is here today. We will be here to answer questions. I'm going to try to take you through a fairly quick presentation on the front end that repeats a little bit of a few items that we went over at the last meeting when we were in front of you last week. You also see in this presentation, there's a reporting back on some of the questions council had. And then, Mr. Chair, you'll take us through kind of a project by project review, and then at that point in time, myself and members of the senior management team are here to answer any specific questions. So just a reminder of some of the drivers we have, and again, you know, I include this for members of council and repeat, there are a number of competing interests, and again, these are some of those drivers that we look at when we look at community impact. So I will definitely not go through all of them, but highlight here some of the things that we shared in terms of sustainable services, the necessity to prepare for the future and what that looks like and that responsibility that we have, and a number of the factors that are things that are either mandated, legislated, or that require us to make some sort of investment. So a few highlights of the 2019 capital plan, again, a reminder in terms of how it stands at this particular point with 35 projects that are currently included, approximately $13.4 million in capital projects for 2019. This equates to approximately $1.3 million in terms of a levy impact, slightly up from last year's, $1.29 million. And again, just a reminder, when we look at our total asset replacement value of a little under half a billion dollars, and the importance of making the necessary investments. As we highlighted and will show you again, the major areas that are seeing investment through this budget are transportation, as well as environment and safety. So this is a slide that you have in front of you. For us, I think it was important, and one of the things we heard at the last meeting was just, again, the importance and the necessity as we move forward to help communicate some of the budget impacts, to look at what they look like in a visual representation. So what this doesn't have is all the roads mapped out to it. That is the next task we will be doing. So we will be looking at how do we overlay these capital projects with the investments from a road standpoint. You'll notice some of these black or gray boxes with a lot of different colors in them. Those are the projects that are in the capital budget that are townwide and have a townwide impact, and therefore, they're captured that way. You'll notice, again, a lot of different colors representing the various wards, the various projects, and the various thematic areas that are included. So again, just a tool that we will continue to work on over the coming weeks and months in an effort to help council and help ourselves communicate to residents where our capital investments are. And I think what you see from this chart is that there is coverage across the entire town. So I think that's another point that's important to look at in terms of where we're making investments. So some considerations for council in terms of levy and funding sources, again, this is a slide that we shared with you before. From a staff perspective and a council perspective, it is about balancing that financial sustainability, being as cost conscious as we can, but at the same time, making the continued investment that needs to happen to maintain our assets. So now moving into the council inquiries. Many of you received, all of you should have received, an update from me this past Monday that addressed these council inquiries. These were some of the requests that came at the meeting that we had last week, and so we will go through each of them. I'm going to suggest we may want to stop following this particular piece, and then see if there's any questions the council may have, and then we can continue with the rest of the presentation. So the Hickson Street parking lot, you have a much lengthier explanation of this particular project and where things are with this particular project, but a few of those highlights are included on this particular seat or on this particular sheet. One of the things that wasn't in play when we were looking at the parks strategy, or when we're looking at the parking strategy, when we were looking at what we wanted to do with Hickson Street, was the arrangement and the partnership with B D S S, which helped us gain 15 spots as well, with the help of the B I A and our own staff, the enforcement strategy in place as well. So we have some design work that we'd like to do here. I think there's a cost benefit case that could be made in terms of the retaining wall to gain a few additional spots. There have been some interim works that have been done to gain two additional spots. We blocked up that one area. We engaged in some legal back and forth with the property owner there to inform them of the works that we were doing. We redid the lines in that particular parking lot. And so the one thing that's probably outstanding is the paving, but again, we can address any particular questions on this, should council have them. And as I highlighted, you do have a much more in-depth explanation in the package that I sent you. So, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you want to stop after each of these and see if anyone has any questions, or you want me, as I suggested, to do them all and then come back.
What is the will of committee? I don't know. Let's carry through, and then we'll come back.
So the next question, the next inquiry that we had was around our 2018 Roads Needs Improvement Study and methodology. I've taken, I guess, some key points out of the update that I sent you that goes into extensive detail in terms of how roads need studies are conducted. Our last road needs studies occurred in 2017. It was conducted by professional inspectors. There was a technical and expert review. There was analysis and modeling using various industry standards and guidelines. The annual projected road works are determined by the road needs study, and then further criteria or more local factors, such as operational maintenance, call trends from the community, growth and development, nearby capital plans, adjacent or nearby land uses such as schools, businesses, and as well as active transportation needs and priorities. Our next study is 2022, and you know, we're aware of those new technologies that are emerging, and staff will be exploring the use of those technology methods and their availability to ensure our next road needs study is as updated as possible. Speed reduction strategy, so dovetailing a little bit on the comments we heard earlier when we were talking about the Parks Master Plan and what council just generally heard during the election and the importance of speed. So I know that question came up. There are continued activities planned, and again, Director Graham can speak to some of those should council have any questions, but continued activities with respect to digital signs, implementation of speed bumps and speed humps, and additional painting. Some of those things are also conversations we're having with the region just today. Director Graham and I met with Mayor Easton and Regional Counselor Rob Foster to discuss some of these works on regional roads and making sure that those get done as well. Data to date has been used to reduce our speed limits in various areas, as well as to inform Niagara Regional Police Services regarding enforcement. We heard earlier a reference to the T M P, and T M P coming also to fruition and being completed this year. It will create more formal traffic calming policies and procedures for us to follow. And in 2019, our focus will be around education and awareness in terms of developing a campaign that aligns some of our speed reduction activities. So staff are proposing, and as we move forward with the 2019 operating budget, you will see a number of speed reduction measures that are captured within the 2019 operating. 13th Street reopening design, we did receive some, again, some inquiries on this. The design phase is almost complete. I think to date, it's probably, you know, not too far away, I would suggest, probably a couple of weeks away from being complete. We have been meeting with the affected landowner as a final step, and I'm happy to report that I think those conversations have been positive, and we do have an agreement, and part of that agreement will see us find some savings in terms of where this project potentially may have come in from a cost perspective. We do plan on reporting to council, Davis highlighted, here in the second quarter of this year. At this time, construction is targeted for 2020, as highlighted on our roads work map that Director Graham did hand out the other day. However, I think in the conversation and in the questions that were asked, should council want to accelerate this matter? Staff have prepared a project sheet. You'll see that towards the end of this presentation in terms of what that project sheet looks like. One of the things I do want to emphasize, because S M T did meet this morning, we talked about all of the projects in the plan, we talked about criteria, how we make decisions, things being brought forward, all things that were brought up at the last meeting that I think are good points. You know, this project does emphasize connectivity, so it's important to remind council about this particular street. It is closed at two points, and we can get into more details on the map in terms of the importance of those two portions of the street being done and what they mean. There are businesses and residents in that particular area, and so from the perspective of the 13th Street reopening works, it does impact some main roads in the east end of town in terms of Fourth, the South Service Road, as well as King Street, and providing that connectivity between them. The Jordan Village Underground Utilities, these are scheduled for 2019 as part of the 2017 work planning. Most of council's aware of the journey that this project has been on in terms of some of the appeals and a formal appeal of the E A study, which did result in a significant project delay that was resolved last year. We are in the detailed design phase in terms of where this project stands. This is, I think council will be incredibly pleased, we're going to be coming back to you on February 6th, I believe, with detail. We will be taking council through a particular workshop. Once design is further along, we'll have a better understanding of some of the utility conflicts and required relocations that will happen, so we expect to know that once the design is done in the middle of this year. We've had very positive dialogue with agencies, specifically Niagara Peninsula Energy, Inc., in terms of those utilities, and looking at burying wires as it relates to Main Street and the benefits of that and the cost implications of that. And to date, I can tell you that N P I has been very cooperative, very positive about looking at those costs and working them into their own budget and capital planning efforts. So definitely a good news story coming on this and something the council will hear about in the coming weeks. So as I said, it's been positive to date, and for us, right now, it's about aligning our capital works with the respective agency's capital works in terms of moving this project So these were the council inquiries from last week. We've put them here as projects 36 through 38, and we can take you through each of them. You see here, from a 13th Street perspective, project 36, a proposed expenditure of $920,000. Now, that is something that Director Graham can answer specific questions in terms of that number, what's included in that number. You see Rittenhouse Road reconstruction design. I haven't talked extensively about that, but we can as well, in terms of one of the outstanding items that council wanted us to report back on. The design is $120,000. There is no levy impact. As we get into project by project, I do want to highlight where those funds are coming for, for this particular project, should council wants to move forward with this, and I will take you through some of the conversations we had on the existing capital projects as well now. And the Jordan Arena Roof Restoration, Community Services, and Director McKay can speak to this particular project, and you see it here at $200,000 coming from our reserve fund. So a slide that you've seen before, this is just a breakdown of projects 1 through 35 that look at the distribution between the various areas. I will quickly go past this. Again, a further breakdown of funding sources, when they're coming from, levy impact, followed by how that's broken out, again, in those same priority areas. And so that brings us back to where we are in terms of project 1 through 35, and then we can discuss 36 through 38 at the end. Mr. Chair.
Okay. Fantastic. Council McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the C O and the staff for going through those requests. I think if I was a batter, I'd be walking back to the dugout right now, swing and a miss. But just a couple of comments, one on Hickson Street parking lot. In my recollection of the discussion around the downtown parking was sort of multifaceted. There was various options on both sides of King Street that we explored, one being the B D S S option, and you know, that seems to be moving along nicely now, but there was also opportunities on the south side of King Street, up by the museum, as well as this Hickson Street project. So I get it, you know, I don't want to lose sight of this project, you know, that it just goes away, because I think there is still a requirement or a need that we have on both sides of King Street.
Through, Mr. Chairman, I think to address the council's questions, when we look at the south side of King Street, I think as Council McPherson highlighted, we have made some improvements to the Hickson Street lot in terms of line painting. I think in total, we've gained three additional spots. The council is correct when we look at where our temporary museum is in that parking lot. We do have some drawings and some interpretations in terms of how we could lay out that parking lot a little more efficiently. Those were part of the conversations we had when we looked at the property at King and Ontario Street in terms of what that orientation would look like. There's also some strategic land acquisitions that we look at, continue to look at, that can also help to address some of those particular issues. So we are incredibly cognizant of some of the issues with respect to parking, council. We'll continue to look at the data, look at where enforcement is helping us continue to message and communicate to residents, to business owners, the importance of utilizing some of these additional parking spots that we've been able to create. I can tell you just anecdotally, and again, I haven't had conversations with the B I A in any detail since that enforcement started, other than a brief conversation last week. We are seeing that folks are taking advantage of that. We are seeing that individuals are parking at that additional site we have at B D S S from an employment perspective. So some spots have become available. I can also tell you that in talking to Ms. Hicks, we have had a conversation about engaging the businesses on the north side as well, to begin looking at the orientation of parking behind that row of commercial property. So in its totality, council, absolutely, we're going to continue to look at Hickson Street, we're going to continue to look at any other additions we can make, and parking remains an important element of our downtown B I A and our downtown efforts.
Okay, and through you, Mr. Chair, excuse me, 13th Street reopening design, good to hear that we're getting close on the design phase being complete. Look forward to seeing that come back. And, you know, frustrated, I won't tell you, I'm not frustrated with the time that it's taken to get to this point, but understand, looking at the proposed cost, that, you know, it's something that we certainly want to make a good decision on, and just to ram it through on the budget, you know, in this budget, without a detailed design and maybe without some more public input to it, you know, doesn't make sense. So I think that's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Through, Mr. Chairman, just on the point of 13th Street, as I said, we will be back in front of you in the next couple of months to talk about that, and I think when we do come back, we can look at the various funding options that are in place. We can also talk about as we move forward in getting a little more deliberate and surgical with our planning of roads, how we see this coming forward, where we see it in terms of that planning phase, and definitely cognizant that it's been identified as something that council supported towards the beginning of 2018 as part of that budget. And so now that we've got the design almost nearing that finish line, we'll be back in front of you shortly with what that looks like and potential options as well.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Kirkopolis. And councillor, thanks for your words there and your comments, because again, if we look in a totality sense, transportation master plan is coming. So we've put, we, you know, collectively put a pause on some of the other developments and have asked for shovel-ready design. So I think, you know, it's prudent and wise to take that same, you know, outlook, and I commend you for your views on that project. Mr. McElloch.
Thank you, Chair. Through you to Mr. Kirkopolis. Okay.
Sorry, councillor, sorry about that.
No problem, we'll let you go this time. Through you to Mr. Kirkopolis. Jordan Village Underground Utilities, is that strictly for Main Street, or is 19th Street looked at with regards to the underground utilities?
So I am going to punt that one over to Director Graham, who's a lot closer to it. I believe it does take into account both, but Dave can give you more details.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the councillor, yes, it would take in the entire project, so Main Street, 19th Street, and it would involve like hydro, bell, and gas means.
Perfect, thank you. That's all.
Councillor Timmers.
Thank you, Chair. Pat Reiver, through you to the C O. I'm really pleased to see the Rittenhouse Road design on here. I guess I'm looking for a little more information, maybe it's through to Director Graham, a little more information of the process, so design and then what, and then timeline, and just if you could just give me the idea of how it, what else involved.
Through, Mr. Chairman, to the councillor, so what we want to do is get the design started, and through the design process, we're basically going to figure out how we're going to upgrade that road, and then quantify all the costs that, you know, it'll cost to actually construct the road. I mean, through the design process, we also go to the public, host a public consultation to the residents who live along the street, get their input into the design, and once we're happy with the design in terms of meeting the residents' needs and et cetera, then we're ready for construction. So it could be a shovel-ready project for construction consideration. In sense of timing, designs usually take about a year to get that process completed.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Graham. And also just one other question, are we looking at Rittenhouse Road complete from number eight out to Victoria, like the entire road? Would it be, or are we looking at portion?
Through, Mr. Chairman, we would look at the entire road, right from Highway 8 to Victoria Avenue.
Great, thank you.
And the intent would be to upgrade it to curbs, gutters, put the sidewalk in, which has been the high priority project driver, so.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mike.
Mayor Easton.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, in terms of not just Rittenhouse, but we could look at Elizabeth Street in the same way, and I talked about this the other night, the project scope on these neighborhood roads, where there's an impact possibly to an outside road, you know, like Victoria Avenue or Stadtbauer, where there's more traffic and activity, where there's a school, where there could be seniors, residents, et cetera. I would like to, through you, Mr. Chairman, to the C O, I'd like to know more about how we're going to look at these as, in terms of a project, keeping in mind that there may be several phases to it. It's not just about surfacing a road to make it look nice, it's really, you know, supporting the neighborhood that's attached to that. And in some areas where you have a lot of traffic, actually creating the active transportation routes so that you're avoiding that. You don't have to go on your bike on Victoria Avenue, you don't have to get into the main traffic. It's one of the reasons why Frost Road is being looked at as an internal route instead of people having to be on Victoria Avenue. So I'd like to know more about that, because certainly we're making investments in project managers for specific projects, but when we look at the asset management plan model, it is based on project management. So I'd like to know how we're evolving, if at all.
Through, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to let Director Graham answer, I think, you know, parts of that question, but I think the comments I'll make in terms of looking at projects in their totality and the way we address projects moving forward, part of that, knowing there's a massive transportation element to it, will be impacted, and a key input will be the transportation master plan, and how that starts identifying these road connections, the importance of both secondary and tertiary roads, and how that feeding happens on some of our primary transportation corridors. Another part of that, I think, is just the way, you know, as a senior management team, we're bringing these projects forward, looking at what are the active transportation pieces, how, you know, what is the involvement with planning, fire, community services, and public works together, looking at these when we look at roads that are major in nature, that are going to be reconstructed, that are going to be urbanized, or what we call adding sidewalks and other elements to it. I think urbanize is sometimes the words we use, you know, internally to describe them, but to the average resident, it's about how do you make it safer, and how does it connect to things, and how do we have sidewalks that connect to other sidewalks, not massive gaps, and we see those in some parts of the community. So we're starting to look at projects internally different, we're starting to apply that project management lens, but I know Director Graham and his team are intimately involved with this, so I'll ask him to provide some comments.
Through, Mr. Chairman, thanks, Mike. I think you did a great job giving a good overview on that, because one of the biggest pieces is the transportation master plan, I think helps tie everything together, but also what we do on every project as well, when we initiate a design process, we look at how that road fits with the other roads, we analyze traffic, we look at We look at growth. We look at pedestrians, how many, you know, pedestrians walk in the area. So we do a lot of evaluation at the onset to ensure that if we're making this investment, we're doing it right with sidewalks and roads. Active transportation now is part of what we do with our projects. It's a fundamental that we apply to every project and make sure we don't miss that opportunity. So when we look at Rittenhouse Road, we'll be looking at those elements.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you. Mr. Kukopoulos, without getting into the detail, it would be very informative to see the outline of the design phase before it's finalized so that we can take part in that to the extent that we will know in the future exactly what is being included. Because I believe this is really, other than talking about it internally, this is a different approach, Mr. Chairman. And I think that some of these projects may have quite a number of elements to them that will, I mean, in the past, I suppose eventually they would have come up, but if we're going to do it this way, I'm very pleased about that. I think it's important. I think it's important to build those projects out so that our neighborhoods become quite complete. So without looking over staff's shoulders, it would be very beneficial to see what, exactly what that does look like, and I would feel quite happy to be able to see that and then put it aside, knowing that's where we're going in the future.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think the comments that I'd offer to the mayor's question is, you know, as we move forward with some of these projects, and I think in a general fashion, sharing the design principles and the design lens that is, you know, used in terms of making decisions. There is a holistic approach that, you're right, we are bringing to it. I think some of that's been in place in the past. I think what we're trying to do is just bring it together in one cohesive approach when we assess things like risk. We heard a lot about risk at the last time we were in front of you. That's one of the lenses we're looking at. Of course, looking at things around pedestrian and child safety. Are there neighborhood parks in the area? What are the amenities that we want in neighborhood parks? And what type of people does that bring? Pedestrian, vehicular? How do people move within our communities, in our neighborhoods, across town? So definitely applying those design principles and sharing with Council how we're going about making these decisions, I think, at a very high level is absolutely something we can share.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I was waiting for that. Okay. So I see no further questions, so let's go into the projects. So, and tonight, you know, if you have merit questions or, you know, concerns, so tonight is the night to bring them up because we asked for the clarification. So we'll go project by project, and if there isn't any questions, then we will proceed. So, project number one, and this is under the Corporate Infrastructure Bucket, is Technology Update. Project number two is the Library IT Update. Project number three is the Redundant Dispatch Phase Number Six. Project number four, the Facility Security Phase Two. Counselor McPherson.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. I was answering a question for my neighbor here. And it's a question on project number one, just from looking at project number two, in that we list in project number two what's being purchased, and we don't list what's being purchased in project number one. Are we, what are we doing? Are we doing one for one and not one for the other? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask Angela to speak to it in terms of what we're looking at, in terms of that particular project. I know some of the higher-cost items really are some of our servers as it relates to our technology update. There are, of course, additional technology, equipment, printers, computers, and those sorts of things, but Angela can address that particular question.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chairman. For this project, we have the desktop units and the monitors, but on top of that, the main component of this budget allocation this year is a lot of infrastructure replacement items. So we have firewalls, routers, servers, switches and routers, and some IT projector screen-type of items as well. So those are our main items for this budget this year, which are at the end of their life.
And I got that in the report. My question is, what's our practice? Are we listing or are we not listing? Because in project number two, we do list.
So through you, Mr. Chairman. Let me take a stab at that because I think the process that the library has gone through in the past, and you're a new member on the board, I think, is to list those things. Over the last number of years, we've gotten away from listing the particular things because I think where possible, we do try to expand and extend the lifespan. We try not to make sure that we're purchasing things unless we need it. So I think we're providing more lump-sum type numbers based on data and based on assessments, but I think Ms. Sefani may have some additional detail to provide in terms of that particular question. But I think our practice has been, not to get into the specific, we're buying one computer for this and one computer for that, but rather broader buckets or sub-buckets in terms of those projects, but I don't know if Angela has something to add to that comment.
And I'm good with that. You don't need to answer anymore. If that's our practice, then that's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment on Facility Security Phase Two. I think that's the one that you were on.
Yes.
And, you know, one of the exercises that we've done in the past in terms of what is one of our practices, often when we hear from Council, you've got questions, or you've got other projects you're looking at potentially moving forward, we go back and we examine all of these projects. We look at, where's there a possibility to further phase some of the work, potentially find some savings? On this particular project, we are going to be recommending removing the $97,500 from the levy perspective, and if needing, move that to fund the levy impact of some of those other projects, projects thirty-six through thirty-eight. I think, you know, what we can do is look at the existing card process and the card-access process, which is the primary concern, the primary issue from a facility security perspective, and then come back to you when we look at security, again, if that be mid-year, if that be next year, and look at how this falls in terms of a priority. But our recommendation from a staff perspective after meeting this morning would be to remove the $97,500 from this, so making the levy impact zero, and apportioning that to potentially those projects thirty-six through thirty-eight.
Fantastic. Project number five, Town Hall Office Additions. Project number six, Fleet Replacement and Enhancements.
Thank you very much. Through you to staff. Just curious about the, it's a trivial thing perhaps, the forklift. Any idea how many hours are on that forklift?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. I'm sorry, I don't have that information with me currently. I can find that out. I guess what I can tell you is it's at its end of its life. We do need to replace it, and we are probably going to replace it with a tow motor. It's really something that we need for shipping and receiving, so it is important that we have a piece of equipment to do that at the Town Hall here for receiving all kinds of different supplies, et cetera, so.
Okay. And then one further question about the midsize sedan. Just with regards to the cost of that and the actual use of it, like, is this a necessary? Like, I'm not questioning whether we need it or not, and just trying to find ways to direct money from one area to another, especially being an electric car or green car. Traditionally, these cars cost just about twice the cost, and I don't know if Doug Ford's eliminated a lot of the green rebates and things like that. I'm nitpicking, but, you know, it's the nickels that add up to the dollars.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, again, I guess, I apologize, we got Chevy Volt in there. It was just an example, but I think the intent is, from the town's perspective, from a fleet image, is that we do want to start setting an example where we're buying more environmentally-friendly fleet where we can and start building that into what we do. And again, we still have to specify this out, whether it's some type of hybrid or whatnot, but our intent is, is we do want to start trying to green our fleet where we can, and that's really the idea behind it. And I think Director McKay can speak to the purpose of the vehicle.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So currently, staff have more of a vehicle than they actually need for the jobs they're performing. So they're going around to check on sites and to check on staff, and they don't need the larger vehicle that they are using for that. So we can repurpose that to get better use out of it and use a more economical vehicle for that purpose.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's the end of the Corporate Infrastructure piece. So we will move on to Environment and Safety. Project number seven, Conkle Creek Remediation Phase Two. Counselor Machima.
Thank you, Chair. Pat Revere. Thank you, Chair. Pat Revere.
You're welcome.
I'm wondering if there's any opportunities for funding that we're aware of that, coming up, that we can apply for, for the continuation of the reconstruction of Conkle Creek.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think Director Graham is looking at me like he wants to respond to this. I know we continue to examine various programs typically, and in the past, we've been successful on the federal programs as it relates to water and wastewater. There are some FCM programs that we have been looking at. I think as we both head into a federal election and come out of a federal election, there'll probably be a lot more clarity with respect to programming potential funds, but our goal would be, once again, to continue to work with senior levels of government. We were incredibly successful in the past on this particular project in terms of the funding that we received, a little over $700,000 or close to $700,000 if I recall correctly. And so that is our goal. Counselor, I think one of the things we look at when we have projects like this and what the government does want is shovel-ready projects. So from our perspective, we want to get some of that prep done, some of that design work done, and be ready should there be a program, and should we be told you have this funding, we're ready to go.
Thank you. Now, I'm just wondering if there was anything specific that we had our eye on, but that's good to know. We're moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. And if you're a member, Counselor, too, this portion of the funds is just for doing the new channel, so taking the works that they did last year, where we did receive a lot of the dollars, to be able to do that remediation work. So to decommission the old channel, commission the new channel, and development charges and a slight impact. So I mean, it's to the levy, $60,000 we're talking about, but I think when we go to do the extended trail and that, that we'll be looking for dollars come that through various funding sources, which Mr. Kukopoulos mentioned. But I think a lot of it was covered off in the previous year's work, and this is just a tidy up to that, so.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That's correct, Counselor, and I think we're always looking at various programs, and so I think, you know, when you tie in the active transportation lens to this particular phase of the project, I think we can probably look slightly more broader in terms of what those funding envelopes look like. So I do see senior staff nodding, so I think I'm on the right track with that.
Mayor Easton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just need some clarification then under Phase One. So we decommission the existing channel and connect them, correct? And then the next piece is the extended trail. When you described it, it sounded to me like the extended trail needed more money, but that's not what this says, I don't think.
Mr. Graham?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor. So this Phase Two portion that we're asking for consideration in the budget is really preparation work for the major Phase Two construction work, which is planned for 2020. So what we want to do in 2019 is continue to get the Phase Two project ready for construction, and one of the big elements that we do want to get right is when we did a Public Information Center for the Phase Two construction work, we had a lot of concerns from residents who back along this area about privacy, property lines, screening, because when we do the Phase Two work, the significant work, which is in 2020, we're going to be constructing a multi-use walkway along that area. So in 2019, we want to work with those property owners, look at ways we can help with any screening concerns that relates to vegetation, hedges, fences, defining property lines, getting a lot of that stuff ready and finalized so that when we go to construction, the project is ready to go, and the residents are on board, and we've worked out all those concerns.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, it needs a little bit of fine tuning just because when we look at this next year, those of you who are looking at these things all the time will remember all this, but if it's in a major Phase Two as opposed to a minor Phase Two, which is the design, I would, I believe that we should be a little bit more clear because I did not realize that there, it was, I thought Phase Two was Phase Two.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Absolutely, Mayor Easton, and I think as we come back during the year, as Director Graham continues to bring updates on these various projects, I think you'll see us go into detail at those particular points in time in terms of what those phases look like, but absolutely in terms of how we communicate these budget sheets, I think that's a great suggestion.
But, Mr. Chairman, the $63,000 is not going to cover major Phase Two. Is that correct? Mr. Graham?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Exactly. You're totally correct.
Okay. So that's my point. I want this job, I want this done. Like, I love this project, and I'm very excited about it, and I want it all done, because I think it's one of the most important projects we've done in a number of years in terms of community good, but it's not clear. It just isn't clear. And I knew $63,000 wasn't enough, but I couldn't find the connections here, so anyway, I'll leave it with you. Thank you very much.
So, project number eight, Lincoln Avenue Storm Sewer Phase One. And I know Mr. Kukopoulos met with the developer because we've been having some issues with the connectivity, so wondering if that's been resolved? You know, you sent out an email on Monday, you know, they might look at putting that flow into this project. Am I correct, Mr. Graham, on that?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, that would, I think that's the intent. It's not finalized yet. The purpose of the budget is, we just want to have this ready to go when the development is ready to go and needs it. So they're still finalizing how it's actually going to connect, but that...
Project number nine, Bartlett Creek West Branch Improvements. So that finishes stormwater, wastewater. Number ten, Twenty-First Street... Number 10, 21st Street Maintenance Hole Replacements. Our Water Works. Number 11, King Street Water Main Replacement, and this is Mountain View to Durham Road. We made that correction at the last meeting. Okay, number 12, Second Avenue Water Main Replacement and Road Improvements in Construction. Okay, number 13, this is another town-wide project, the Smart Hydrant Inserts Phase One. Okay, project number 14, again, covering the whole town, a water meter replacement Phase Two. Project number 15, again, a town-wide project, the Wox Valve and Hydrant Maintenance Trailer, coming from the Water Main Reserve. Okay, so that finishes up our Water Works portion. Moving to the Fire Services. So, project number 16, the Vineland Fire Station Design and Site Services, and we had, Mr. CEO, you made some comments about this last meeting.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I did. If you've got any specific questions, I know Chief Hudson's here to answer them, but I think one of the comments and one of the commitments we made to council is that this project would be conditioned on us getting the go-ahead from the region, who is the approval body on behalf of the province to construct in this particular location. We remain confident we'll get that, that okay, and so Director McKay, Graham, and Chief Hudson, and the collective, Ms. Dale, have all been involved in helping move that forward, but that is our commitment to council, that is, I think, the conditional piece we want to put on this particular project, that should we get, and hopefully we will get the approval from the region to move forward, then we will expend any dollars. We will not be expending dollars until we get that go-ahead, and we'll be reporting back to council on that.
Thank you very much for that. Project number 17, Camden Fire Station Digital Sign. Okay, now, I had a question with this, with respect to this project. You know, coming out of, coming out of the election and people saying, the residents, you know, that there were certain things that they didn't know what was going on, and looking at a holistic approach, and talking about the corner of Serena and John Street, and some type of, you know, community board, just, why not a video sign? As we're kind of progressing down that route of, you know, telling people what's going on and looking to go the video board way? Just curious.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask Ms. Beatty to respond to that.
To you, Mr. Chair. For this particular sign, we haven't yet completely scoped out the specs of this sign, so it will be based on business need. We do want to flag it as emergency services building, so the intent of the sign would be really more for public education, notifications, and fire-related town events. It's important from a public education perspective, but as I said, we haven't confirmed yet what that scope would be.
Okay, because knowing the one on 19th Street, I mean, they use it to also advertise local goings-on, so, you know, in my travels throughout the province, I see that a lot, and that seems to be something that was lacking, and people were looking for it. So, I mean, if that's going to come at some point, then that's great.
Through you, Mr. Chair, just one more point on, so as we had discussed, I think, in council orientation, we are looking at a long-term plan for more digital signage for that purpose across the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty. Project number 18, Fire Equipment. Project number 19, Fire Department Fleet. And this would be the new rehab vehicle. Okay? And the last... Oh, sorry, sorry about that, okay. Counselor Michaelak is first.
Thank you. Through you, to the chief. This rescue rehab truck, how long have we had this truck for?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the counselors' questions. We purchased this truck in 2013, it was part of a pilot project. We bought a 1998 used truck, just to see if the pilot project would fit the bill for a health and safety initiative we undertook. We have since determined that, you know, that pilot project did fit the bill, it worked out very well, and now we're looking to capitalize on more permanent solution to this, and we'll retire the 21-year-old truck, whatever it is at this point in time.
Oh. Well, you know what? Put, we'll flip, we'll, okay. I'm going to put him on.
Perfect. So with this vehicle, how many other townships, does Niagara Lake have a truck similar to this? Would Pelham have a truck similar to this? Just curious, the actual needs compared to...
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, this, I think I identified a number of new regulations that have come forward with respect to some of the needs of this truck, in particular, the decontamination needs that we spoke of during the council orientation. And to answer your question, other departments, Niagara Lake does have a similar vehicle. There are a number of other ones that are looking at this, because it is legislated that you must provide decontamination services on the scene of a incident scene, like a fire. So I think you'll see more and more that this is prevalent around the province.
Okay, so I was not aware that this was a requirement on the scene, and they have decontamination at the hall, I take it?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair, there is a decontamination of the actual gear, but before you even leave the scene, you are considered contaminated.
Okay.
You can't ride in the truck with your bunker gear on, it's actually still emitting toxic fumes that are proven to be carcinogen, and this all stems really from WSIB claims, where they actually presumptively assume if a firefighter gets cancer, it's due to the job, and to try to prevent that, which is a good thing, they've implemented a number of these health and safety regulations. This particular one, as far as decon goes, that is a fairly new one, it's been in place a little less than a year now, but it's something that the Ministry of Labor is really looking at enforcement, stepping it up.
Then, how many structured fires, or how many fires do we have roughly in a year?
It really depends on the year, but about 15% of our call volume are fires of whatever nature, whether it's a house fire or a car fire, so I don't have the actual number of structure fires in front of me, but I can certainly get you that information.
I just look at the number, 400,000 for a truck, I, you know, again, I'm trying to find savings in this budget if possible, and, yeah.
Well, if I may, too, it does serve a dual purpose. It does actually serve the rehab function as well, which is another mandated service, so the thought process behind this was to have a vehicle that does dual duty and try to gain some efficiencies there, rather than have separate vehicles and separate equipment. And it is staffed by auxiliary members, which was part of the pilot project, with the retired firefighters, so there is no real, or very little, operational cost in terms of that, it's, so, it is quite a savings, so.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McPherson?
No, next project, go.
Oh, well, okay.
Keep going.
Well, I don't know what you're doing.
Keep going.
Okay, so, project number 20.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Emergency Management Fleet, Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to the chief, just a little bit of clarity as to this particular purchase. And I am, I guess, questioning, we've got a joint, a joint Niagara West Emergency Management Program that we're looking to purchase a vehicle for, for emergencies. So I guess the obvious question would be, what does the vehicle do when there's no emergency? And I guess the other question, and, you know, pardon me if this is a dumb question, why would we not use the vehicles that we're driving every day to get to that emergency? Through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chair, this is actually part of the Joint Emergency Management Program that we are doing within West Niagara, wherein we are sharing resources to comply with emergency management legislation. It's not particularly for responding to emergencies so much, it is for more administrative things, such as providing vehicles to go amongst the various municipalities to ensure that the emergency operations centers are up to speed, to ensure compliance, to do training. So it is a shared vehicle, the cost will be shared amongst a number of municipalities. Lincoln is just taking the lead on this, and will be recovering part of the cost through a cost recovery arrangement with the other municipalities.
Can we show that in the budget? Is that something we can...
It's there.
Is it?
Yeah, so the cost recovery, 29, so in essence, the net cost of this vehicle is $16,000, and that's coming against the levy.
So, again, to the second part of the question, so this is something that would sit... I guess, I guess I'm still trying to understand, so we've got a person that we're sharing as well, so this is that person's vehicle?
Correct, and this would be used to allow this person to travel amongst the participating, excuse me, municipalities. It would be used to transfer equipment and supplies to emergency operations centers should we have to activate the EOC. Training materials, we're all required to do annual training, compliance work, so it will be used essentially during nine-to-five office hours type of thing, and then the occasional, if there happens to be an emergency after hours, it would be called into duty.
Very good, thank you, chief.
Mayor Easton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to go back to project number 19, and through you to the chief, to ask the question, what would be the result of not replacing it? I'm reading the risks. We have the truck, we have a vehicle now that, that we use for rehab, and the work is getting done, the support is there, so if we didn't do it, if we didn't expend this money in this year, are you telling us then, should we understand that these risks are actual risks, real risks that will be an outcome, or... Or what? Because if we had the truck that we've got now, and it's working, if we could make a purchase midway through the year, if we needed to, to delay the purchase, just to help with cash flow, or whatever it is that we might need?
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor's question, the truck we have now is a used ambulance, it's very cramped for space, it certainly wouldn't allow us to do any of the decon function at all. The other issue we have is, it is a 1998 model truck, and as we have found in fleet in past years, once we reach a certain point in time, the reliability and the repair costs start to go through the roof. So in order for us to do, from a risk management perspective, to, in order to us, allow us to really comply with the decontamination functions, which is really a new service that we're having to provide, the existing truck is not sufficient for that, so we would not really have a vehicle or the equipment by which we could carry out that service.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, it sounds to me like on a night like tonight, if you've got a big fire at one of the chicken bars, you're using this, and traditionally, that's what they were used for, you go there, you've got soup, you've got coffee, you've got sandwiches, whatever, is that right? Is that correct?
It's really more than that, it's actually really, it's actually what we do, call a sector, where there's actually specific fire ground duties, where we do medical monitoring, we're required to hydrate the person, it's no longer bringing out soup and sandwiches, we actually don't do that anymore, but... Yeah. That's traditionally what it was, but it's more than that, that we have to, especially in the hot or cold weather, we have to, you know, give the rest, give the hydration, medically monitor the vital signs, record all this for health and safety purposes, and, you know, it is quite an elaborate process, actually, each call we do.
Okay, all right, Mr. Chairman, you know, I understand that, you know, I'm like Counselor Michaelak, I'm looking as well for an opportunity, because when we get down to the end of the list, we might find that we need some money, and I was just looking for an opportunity.
That's okay, and I, no worries, your worship, I just, you know, and if I can shed some light on it by talking to the chief, too, on this, and it might weigh lay some of your concerns, is that this is a vehicle that will have to be built, so they might be looking at nine to 12 months before they get delivery of it, so, you know what, that's might weigh lay some of your concerns. And, too, if I stand corrected, wasn't this vehicle, did this vehicle not provide yeoman service to that structural fire in Grimsby? That where it was front and center, and was a godsend to that horrific event? Chief?
Through you, Mr. Chair, absolutely, it was, that was a hot day, as you may recall, in July, and it was a very difficult and a long call to handle, and this really, I'm not going to say it saved the day, but it was certainly a huge benefit.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
No worries, your worship, no worries, no worries at all. I just want to remind you that you said too early about, you know, buckets and, you know? So we've got to stay up here, okay. Project number 21. Let me get situated here. Okay, so, project number 21, Oaklawn Columnarium. You're premature for the next one, Counselor McPherson, okay? No worries. Project number 22, the Jordan Arena Equipment. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and it's not a challenge to the project, it's more a comment around life cycle of a building, and, you know, at what point do we make a decision that we're not going to continue to invest in this wonderful old arena, and we're going to start the process of potential replacement of this arena.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, I think both Director McKay and I have some comments to make, but let me ask Shannon to start with some of the comments in terms of this project and its need in the short term, and then we can talk a little bit about the second part of that question.
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you. This is really part of our life cycle maintenance, and I think doing this is prudent now, because some of these items were identified back a few years ago, and should have probably been addressed sooner. We also know that the costs continue to escalate, so we actually have estimates from back in 2015 when these things, and some of these items have gone up quite a bit. As far as your specific question about when we look at that building, certainly $200,000 seems like a lot, but it's a lot less than the multimillions that we would be looking at to replace and rebuild the new building. So we will be coming back later this year in front of council to talk about the Jordan site, and the possibilities, and the 2021 games, and a number of things, but we think these are prudent and wise maintenance issues that need to be addressed, because even if we were to decide, we need to get through the next few years, at least, these will prolong these items much longer than that, so it is important that we move on with this, but we will be looking at the site in the totality and what the future might bring for that site very soon.
Mr. Chair, appreciate, appreciate the director's comments, and again, it's not a question of the spend, I mean, we could add the $200,000 for the roof on that, and now we're $400,000, so it's a significant number for an aging or in its twilight building, so, you know, I think that it's great to hear that this year, we're going to be looking at where we're going from here. Thank you.
And again, Counselor, that might come out of our Parks Master Plan that we're going to anticipate, right? So, you know, we don't want to put the cart before the horse, so to speak. Project number 23, Fleming Center Scoreboard. Project number 24, Bennett Hall. Counselor McIllicuddy.
Through you, Chair. Just a quick question. Is there a scoreboard in the arena currently?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There is a scoreboard, but it's only at the east end of the facility, so it does cause problems for the athletes on the ice when they're not going in that direction.
Just curious, how many scoreboards are in the Jordan Arena? There's one. Thank you.
And if I may, just to provide some overall look at it, the scoreboard in the Beamsville Arena is from 1967, was retrofitted to have LED bulbs put in it probably 15 years ago, and this will have no impact on the levy. So when we're looking at that project going forward, Counselor, maybe we can look for that opportunity as well in our east end facility. Project 24, Bennett Hall Facility Repairs. Moving into parks. Project 25, Jordan Pool Splash Pad. Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is just more of a clarification. It does say that the aim is to reduce water consumption by 20%, but what, and it says at the bottom, the value measurement is water costing. Do we have an actual quantified amount of how much that will save potentially, or a range, if you may?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I do not have that available, but I can get that for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Counselor. I had the same question, so thanks for asking that. Project number 26, Park Asset Replacements and Repairs. Project number 27, the Ted Roberts Park Parking Lot Repaving. Project 28, the Charles Daly Park Driveway Repaving. Project 29, the Serena Park Development Phase One. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And obviously, we heard a passionate presentation the other night on this particular presentation. And, you know, the fact that a skate park is desired and needed in this town, I'm not going to dispute. What I am going to bring into question is the timing. And, you know, as we prepare for a Parks Master Plan that we heard about tonight and bring in all of the priorities in front of us within three to six months, and I look at, you know, the Serena Park design, and we know the process that we've gone through with other parks and their designs, and the whole public piece of that and the input from the neighbors is key to us putting that design together. You know, I would suggest that we look at this, moving this to 2020, that this project be a 2020 capital project and get through the Serena Park design, receive the Parks Master Plan and all of the priorities that the Parks Master Plan puts in front of us. You know, I mean, there are some questions that I think will come out of the Serena Park design from the local residents around noise, around, you know, these folks being in the park, and I think we need to hear that out prior to making a commitment to this $600,000. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor McIllicuddy.
Thank you. Further to Mr. McPherson, Counselor McPherson, when I look at the statistics, there's 16% that are participants in the wheeled action sports, and I just see a lot of interest in the special events or in the beaches waterfront, in the recreational trails, and I don't see a whole lot of money being spent at this time in the things that the majority of the population are requesting, even in the Beamsville area where 73% or so of the polled participants, 73% living in the Beamsville area, yet only 16% are actively, you know, interested in the wheeled sports. That's my comments to that. Maybe perhaps could we defer that project, given the expense of the capital budget that we're looking at currently, 13 million?
Mr. Kerkopolis.
So through you, Mr. Chairman, just maybe a couple of comments, and I do, you know, I do look forward to hearing any other comments or answering any other questions council may have. I want to caution, and I think, you know, Stephen did a great job highlighting that I think sometimes when we look at statistics and data, I think it's taken the data in its totality and not looking at 16% of these respondents. I think it's an important input, but it's not the only input. I think we often look at face-to-face meetings, we look at award meetings, we look at consultations that we have in a number of other ways. But absolutely, Counselor, I think, you know, when we look at the various amount of input, when we look at different ways to phase any particular type of project, we can absolutely do that. I also want to caution, and I understand council completely, looking at what is the final number at the end, but looking at the revenue sources for some of these, and that is not to say that whether it's reserves, whether it's development charges, that still isn't money. I don't want anyone to leave thinking that that's what I'm inferring, but it's important to look at the levy impact if we're looking at lessening the levy versus where the other funds are coming from. But absolutely, is there an opportunity, should council desire, again, not, you know, looking at whatever other questions we may have, to look at potentially tackling this project differently, then we are open to any other questions or comments council may have on that particular piece of it.
Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This might be to CEO Kerkopolis or to SMT. I know that the Parks Master Plan is going to be coming down in June. What's the next phase for the, again, I think Counselor McPherson made a great point about that next phase. So what happens with the park design? When can we expect that? Is it going to be, if it's going to be before, well, I'm hoping that there's going to be some sort of reaction from the public and there's some sort of out or solicitation of feedback before that. But like, what's the actual realistic timeline of Parks Master Plan? When does the actual park plan come in for that actual park and then potential build? I'm just trying to get some idea on the dates.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think Ms. McKay can answer that particular question.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So we're planning to have the draft ready for council and the public and their feedback on that in April. So that is the plan for the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We would then, if we were to go ahead and this were to be approved, we'd be looking at the results of that, excuse me, draft plan, and we would be working on the design based on what we've heard from that draft plan. So the draft plan's going to obviously have a lot more than what you heard today. What you heard today was just that initial feedback through the survey and through the PICs and through the interviews. So we could start that engagement process at the same time. The plan is going to be available and finalized with all of the feedback from council and the public in June, and then we would design out for the, having a design, hope to come back into council before the end of the year with that design because we want to make sure that we were going out for pricing and costs at a good time to be able to get the best price to be able to build in 2020.
So with that being said, if we're looking at the design for the park at the end of 2019, the realistic implementation of the actual park being built would be 2020?
Yes.
At best case scenario.
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Rinchima.
Thank you, Chair Patrick. I know that we had, so a question to the build of the skate park. I know that we had a community group that's interested in funding the build for that. I'm wondering if we're concerned that there may be any risk of losing that funding with the time, if there's a time change for the build?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Why don't I take a stab at answering that, and then anyone else that may want to chime in from SMT can. I think there's always that caution when you're bringing a capital project forward and you've got interest from the community, whether that be private sponsorship, which may be available, I don't know, but when you look at groups like the Rotary, for example, and Sue Foster was here the other day to listen to that discussion and has been part of that group and is looking at committing some funds to this particular project in terms of the work that her and her board and her organization are doing. So I think before groups commit funds, they always do like to make sure that the municipality is committed to moving the project forward. So to answer your question, is there a, Rick, I think there's always a potential risk, and so that would be my answer, Counselor, as it relates specifically to that question. Should, again, should council make a decision to take a more phased approach, then, you know, we will ensure we message that appropriately, that there still remains a commitment, but nonetheless, that's always a risk that, you know, we try to balance.
Yeah, that would be my concern. Thank you.
Mayor Easton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, the council had committed $150,000 to a skate park, I think, I think two years ago, and we used some of that money for the portable facility. We're now into the third generation of punting this one off, and we do have quite an interest. There is a group both in Vineland and in Beamsville where kids are being transported, actually everywhere, they're being transported all over the region to take part in skate park activities. I think I've been to all of them. It is one of the quieter sports, and in terms of the exposure to the community, when the Fleming Center was built, and I'm sorry that, well, others were here, I wasn't, but I remember, I recall Counselor Renee saying on a number of occasions, this was designed as a complete community, if you will, and the Fleming Center was a piece of it, having supervision and access to washrooms and a cafe, if you will, being able to bring your family there and use a variety of services was very much part and parcel of the whole story around this. So I think that we are, we're holding true to those principles, and so people are always concerned about skate parks, but this is a daylight hour skate park. It includes the bike pump component. It's my experience that the older kids are, there is a code of conduct that I have observed over and over again. So I think when you get that mix of kids and you've got the little kids on their striders because of the mixed use, you get a different culture. But I must say, when I go up to, when I go up to Smithville and just sit there and watch the kids or look down in the bowl and see what's going on, it's a pretty quiet place. It's not, it is not noisy, and so, you know, I certainly always encourage people to go to these other places and have a look at them. The fact that the project is near the end of the year, I think, helps with concerns for sure, and it also provides an opportunity for other sponsors to be approached during that phase, which I think is desirable. So this is a youth program, and I'll be supporting it because I think it's going to be one of the major demonstrations of the council saying to youth, this is something you're interested in, and we're going to support those of you who are keenly interested in it. We're designing it and we're outfitting it with more diversity than most other communities have, and therefore more kids can get involved. And I think that the people that would have been consulted on this, Mr. Chairman, may, a lot of them may have been adults. So some of the little kids, maybe the eight-year-olds and the seven-year-olds who would be coming into this sport, they may not have had anything to say at all, but we certainly saw a lot of enthusiasm during the summer, so I will be supporting this. I feel its time has come. Thank you.
Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Going back to the timing, and again, I think Mayor Easton made a lot of great points about the importance of programs or projects like this. My only thought is, again, if the, in all likelihood, the actual creation of the park itself, the fundamental building of the park likely won't happen, and again, I'm thinking because most of it's poured concrete, it's probably not going to happen until spring of 2020, just to get my timing right. Is it possible to break this out a bit and look at the design this year as part of, again, that aftermath of the Parks Master Plan coming out? I think it shows that we do have a commitment to this project as a whole, but again, realistically, it's not going to be built this year anyway, so why not just defer that portion of the budget until 2020? Just my, again, just a question, based on previous projects, is that the way it normally works, or do you just defer the project and move it to the next year?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. And again, I'm not sure if any other members of SMT may have any additional comments. Angela, from a finance perspective, and/or Shannon, and/or her team. Is that possible, absolutely, Counselor? I think, you know, we've seen in many years where we do design and one year in construction and the other year. I think, again, the sensitivity of ensuring that we message appropriately, that an approval of this does mean that next year construction's happening can potentially, should council direct us, absolutely be the way we want to go. You know, you've seen us on the Vineland Fire Station, for example, do an approval that's really conditional on a couple of things happening. So I think there's a number of ways to, you know, potentially segment the project should council choose to go in that direction, and you're correct. I think when you look at the timeline, it probably wouldn't be starting until the spring of 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to reiterate that I am certainly not recommending that this project be deleted. I am not recommending that. I am recommending that we defer the project and, you know, go to the good planning that we have done in other parks and where we have engaged the public throughout the process and showed them the design that we're thinking about and getting that public input and having a time that's not so congested that I haven't personally experienced in the two terms I've been here, that this is just all being done in the same year. Let's go through the process. We have the current skate park that is a year old, so we could use that again this next summer, put this on the 2020 capital plan with both a Parks Master Plan and the Serena Park Design done. And if I need to bring a motion for that, then I would do that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to ask again, I had highlighted that Director McCann or Associate Director Aine may have some comments. So Shannon may have some comments she wants to add, but, you know, likewise, I'll ask Sarah to come up and maybe provide you a little bit of a better indication of some of that Parks planning piece.
Through you, Chair. I would just like to revisit the project timeline that I shared the other evening because I think there's some clarity that can be provided particularly to Counsel Russell's inquiry. We are looking...
particularly to Counsel, Counsel Russell's inquiry. We are looking to get the funding for this project so we can secure two successful proponents, one to do the design work for Serena Park and one to do the building work for the skatepark and pump track. We absolutely know that building work will not happen this year in 2019. It's a very niche market, as you can appreciate, people who build those amenities. And because of that, they do book up fairly in advance, at least a year in advance. However, if we were to wait until 2020, the risk would be that we wouldn't be building until 2021. So I just want to be very clear that that's why we're looking to secure those proponents this year in order to finish the design of the park by the end of the year and realistically start the build in the spring of 2020. Any delay in that would result in us not building until likely 2021. Thank you.
Counsel Mickler.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you, like, I'm in full support. I think it's a fantastic park, like, the pump track, I think it looks terrific. I'm in full support of it. I just questioned the timing of it. And, you know, I've been, you know, I appreciate what I've just heard right there. I just would like to see, me personally, an overall vision of that park and how one would possibly tie into the other, rather than seeing an image of the park and just things dropped here and there, especially given it's quite a substantial investment in a time where we're spending thirteen and almost thirteen and a half million dollars already. So, and every project, from what I hear, seems to be important. So that's being new. That's, that's my two cents.
Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, just in response to that, and in the spirit of the work that we have done around planning, if, if, if we can be shown a plan according to Ms. Aine's declaration, then I would feel comfortable supporting the division which Counsel, Counsel McPherson is suggesting. But I don't want us to find ourselves in a situation where we are at risk for the 2021. So whatever those nuances are, if it's possible to do that, then I can certainly support that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I do have some comments, I think, as does Director McKay. So we'll both take a stab at providing some comments. And I think I have a thought that may work.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. So I think I'm just then going to echo Sarah's concerns about the, the ability to secure that contract to build in time because we will, we will need to get that commitment. And if we miss that opportunity because we don't have budget approved, we may miss that. So I think, I think Sarah highlights a risk. We're not saying it will absolutely happen that way. But if we don't have the commitment of the budget to build the park and miss the opportunity to secure one of only two proponents that actually do this work in Canada, there is a risk. And I think we just, we want to make sure that we highlight with you that risk.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think there's, there's a couple of things. I just asked Angela for some clarification. Should you approve it and we don't spend the money, it stays in the reserve. So I do want to clarify that. But there's always the option for us to come mid-year, I think, to address some of the timing issues. I always believe there's opportunity, especially when funds aren't impacting the levy, for us to come and talk to you mid-year. Let's get the Parks Master Plan approved. Let's, let's start that design process and come to you as early as possible so that we can secure individuals, we can secure these types of companies knowing that the par, that the planning happens a year in advance. I don't know, again, and I think there's obviously a risk that should we come to you in September, that still puts us late in the year to do that. But it is a lot sooner than December or January of the following year. So there is an opportunity for us to also look at it that way and to try to accelerate when we come to you.
Okay. Thank you for that. Counsel McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I guess I would, I would say that this discussion about 2021 is a surprise to me. You know, there was, there was no discussion, you know, prior to tonight that I heard about that was billed in 2021. It was, it was, we're building it for this summer, and we're going to do the Serena Park design along with the, the build of the skatepark. So, so I don't know what to say to that. I, you know, if that was the case, and I think we should have stated that in the report, you know, I think we're all thinking that this is a 2020 build, or sorry, a 2019 build and not a 2020 build. So, you know, I, I think we've got to, again, you know, reiterate, redo the proper planning around building this. And then it's a request for a deferral with, with a current park that we can use this summer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, so, yeah, so you know what, and I think I'm hearing the same thing, is that, is that no one wants the project deferred. Correct? Correct. But what we're asking for is the proper planning process. And, and so if that's there with the, with, so does the, you know, in wording? Thank you, Adam. I was just going to say conditional and, and say that it's, you know, the build is conditional on 2020, on getting an approved design for the entire park, brought as soon as we can, maybe Q2, Q3, where once that's, design's approved for the entire park, that it triggers, it triggers the ask. So, because, again, last night, Adam and I were at the library board meeting, and we had, Adam had brought up the, you know, about the skatepark. And of course, the, you know, the library is talking about impingement of parking, and they need to be consulted. And we know that there's an on-street parking problem in that development. And in that initial design, the other night, where we dropped the four components down, there wasn't any additional parking planned into it. So I think no one's debating the merits of, of doing this project. I mean, it was the hit at the AT event last June, that pump track. And, and you know what? I personally want to be the first municipality to have that. But I think what everyone's just saying is, we need to plan it properly. So if we can put that word "conditional" in there, some way, shape, or form, I think we've got unanimous approval around. Do, do, Counsel McPherson, Ms. Kirkles, do you need a, do you need a, a motion for this, or?
A motion to amend what, what we are going to add to the capital budget for that particular project.
Through you, Counsel. Are you asking for a motion to amend what we're putting forward to the capital budget in terms of this particular project? That you want to make that known in the minutes? For sure?
Yeah, I think so.
Yep. Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Here we end. Counsel McPherson, go ahead.
Go ahead together.
Yeah.
That project number 21, 29, Serena Park, Phase One, be split into two projects. One, the Serena Park redesign completed in 2019. And two, the skatepark being deferred to 2020 pending the approval of the Serena Park design.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. If I could just make, and so I don't know how it's captured, and I will leave that to the clerk to figure out, that, that portion that we come back to you as soon as possible, once those things are done in 2019, though, in order to be prepared to build for 2020. So I don't know how we capture that particular piece of it, or if that's just understood and is simply direction. But that's how I think if the motion passes, we would like to take that, that direction.
If I may.
Counsel McPherson, go ahead.
Again, what I'm, what I'm suggesting, recommending is that we're not approving the money, this budget. That, yeah, we can come back with the, whatever we're coming back with in the late, late summer or early fall, and then have that ready for the 2020 budget.
Through you, Mr. Chair. My, so again, you know, the suggestion, if you're asking me, from that perspective, I would like the flexibility to come to you mid-year and ask for that money before 2020's budget, knowing that it's being funded from the reserves once the work you want done is done. But again, I'm in, I'm in Counsel's hands. But that, that would be my advice in terms of a small tweak to that, would be that we don't wait till 2020 to approve it, which may take us to December or January, and then a build doesn't happen until 2021. But that I come mid-year to you, or whenever that is, late summer, early fall.
Yes, you did. So you're going to have to, you're going to have to re-energize yourself there and get in the queue. Mayor Easton.
Well, I just want, that's the point that I want, I wanted to make sure that all the work was done, and then comes to us, we say yes. And then, you know, the RFP goes out. And, but we don't, the work isn't going to be done until the spring, but we're not missing a beat. It's just that we get our ducks in a row.
Yeah. And I, and I think we, I think we achieve that by, by removing the word deferred and say conditionally, construction in 2020. I think that if, if, you know, the mover to that, when he comes back up in three, if he's amenable to that, because I think that keeps, I think that keeps the flavor of what we want to achieve.
So, Mr. Chairman, what I'm looking for is wording that, which is what I heard initially, was that the project, that design number 20, or project number 29 be approved on condition of the complete design for the park.
Okay.
Directing staff, you know, I mean, that means it has to come back for approval, so...
Okay. You finished your worship?
Oh, my apologies.
Quite all right. I was going to turn you off, but that's okay. It's okay. Counsel Timbers.
Okay, thank you, Chair Patrieva. I'm not really quite sure, you know, the way we're, we're discussing this, for Phase One is for 2019 with the build in 2020. So I don't understand why we need to amend the motion to delay it when it's going to be coming, it'll be coming as an ask anyway. So what is the purpose of delaying it? Is it just to keep this money out of this budget? Is that the purpose? Like, I don't understand where we're going with this. Because the build, the build is still going to be in 2020. The money is still going to be spent. So I don't really quite, I don't understand where we're going with this. Whether we, is it just to remove this money from this budget, and then the ask comes further in the year? It's still going to be the same money. It's still, I don't know. If someone could answer, explain it to me, because I'm missing something here.
Okay.
I don't know who wants to speak to that, but, like, am I the only one looking at it that way? Or, like, it doesn't even make sense to me. We're just delaying the ask. But the money's still the money. It's not a levy. It's not affecting the levy. I don't support putting it in the next budget at all. But if we delay it tonight, and then six months from now, they come forward and ask for the money for the next phase, what's the difference?
Well, and I think Counsel, Counsel McPherson was the one that originally proposed this. So he can probably shed some light on that, Counselor. We've got Counsel Rinchima up, and then Counselor McPherson will respond to you.
I just don't, I don't get the purpose. The money's still there, and it's still going to be spent.
Yes. You're welcome. Counsel Rinchima.
Thank you, Chair Patrieva. I do understand the concerns around having the skatepark designed in conjunction with the rest of the park and that it all makes sense. That does make sense to me. I'm still concerned, though, that whatever decision we make tonight, we make sure that the communication goes out to the community group that's interested in funding the park and that there's no anxiety created around that and that we make sure we do everything we can to secure that funding.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. To the Counsel's question, I think, you know, regardless of the decision this evening, that absolutely would be our intent, is to ensure that we're communicating and demonstrating the commitment to this project.
Counsel McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And hopefully, to answer Counsel Timbers' question, as I understand the report, Phase One is the Serena Park design and the skatepark. And in our report here, we've got complete Phase One this year. So it's, it's all about this year. So, and, and the other thing I would, I would say on the concession, or what did you call that?
Condition.
Thank you. Remember, we've got a Parks Master Plan coming. And our Parks Master Plan is going to put priorities on various things around town, the skatepark being one of those priorities. So to say that we're going to hold the money for the skatepark without the Parks Master Plan is a mistake. It's a mistake in my mind. We need that Parks, it's, it's months away. If we weren't even doing this Parks Master Plan, this would be an easier decision. The fact that we've gone through that process, and we are expecting a Parks Master Plan very soon, that as we heard from Steve tonight, will outline all of the priorities for the town, then we say this fall, hey, the skatepark makes sense. Let's build it next year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so I do have a few comments, but Director McKay, I think, like, would like to chime in as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I just would like to make clear in talking to the Director of Finance, that we can't go to market with an RFP without having the budget. So if we wait until next year to have this approved in the budget, there are risks to timing. That's what it is. I, I would just want to make Counsel aware of that. So if we do have the ability to come back to you in year or do the conditional approval, those would be preferred options for staff to make sure we get this park element into the new design. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think just to dovetail on Director McKay's comments, you know, as I understand it, I think segmenting it into two projects is what the Counsel is suggesting. I think the first project is the design in its totality. I think the only concession or indulgence that I'm asking as, on this particular project, is the flexibility to be able to come to you mid-year with that presentation, once these other elements are completed. And then that does provide, I think, that flexibility, knowing that the monies will be expended in 2020. But again, I'm, I'm in Counsel's hands. But, sorry, that would be the only piece that, you know, I'd be looking for. But again, not having heard the motion and what that means.
All right, okay. And before I go to Counsel McPherson, okay, I'm going to go to you, and I'm going to summarize. Because we're going to, we're going to have a motion, and we're going to vote on this. Because my round wheels are now square. Okay? So it's time to move on. We've had a fulsome discussion. So let's come up with a, with a well-thought-out motion. And Counsel McPherson, I'm going to you.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to the Director of Finance. I'm guessing it's you, Angela. If we were to split this into a couple of different projects, and we had the Serena Park project design as one, and we had a RFP as a, as a project for the skatepark, could we move the, the purchase, since we're going to build it in 2020, 2020, sorry, can we have the, the budget for 2020 come up next year for the actual build?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So what you're asking is that we're going to RFP before it's actually in the budget, is what you're asking, just for clarification?
I guess that's what I'm asking.
So typically, what we've just been discussing is, RFPs could be issued, but again, it would be on Council approval of those dollars. So going back to Mike's point, if you did issue the RFP partway through the year, and it would be conditional on Council approval of those funds, then it could be approved within 2019 for 2020. Otherwise, it would wait till, we couldn't award the contract till 2020, till that budget is approved.
And I guess that being the case, to me, it's still, you know, we're still approving this project this year. That, that's what I, I can't get my head around, is we're actually approving the project this year because we're saying okay to the money. And so now, we appease Counsel McPherson by, you know, waiting until the fall. Counselor McPherson by, you know, waiting until the fall, you know, and going through the gyrations, and then come the fall, now we're ready. So, I, I, you know, I just think we're, we're putting the cart before the horse here, and we are not, we are not taking into Parks Master Plan into consideration that this may get bumped for two years, because we've got splash pads to put in around town, or we've got other projects that come out ahead of this project. You know, I, I'm, I don't expect that's gonna happen. I think we're gonna build it next year, but I just think that, that this is useless, a useless discussion, if we're, we're actually going to approve the monies.
Mr. Krikopoulos.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think the Counselor makes a good point, and staff remind me that, you know, even coming in, in August and September, late in the year, still potentially has the risk of deferring it to 2021. So I think, to the Counselor's point, if, if we're having this discussion and wanna have a build in 2020, then you are approving it, whether it be conditional, whatever verbiage you put in it, it is effectively a conditional, a conditional approval, but it's nonetheless an approval. As Angela said, you know, we can't issue an RFP without having that particular approval. So, I think we're back to, you know, being in your hands, in terms of, do you want to segment this and have one project this year that looks at design, knowing that the potential for the skate park then comes in, in 2021, when we look at appropriate booking. So I wanna be completely forthright and say that even if we were to come back as quickly as possible, a 2020 build, in terms of being able to secure proponents that late in the year, makes it very difficult. So, I think the Counselor's right, in terms of reflecting then what it is that's before you this evening.
Okay. Well, Counselor McPherson's crafting his motion. I'm going to go to the two speakers on my list, and then we're gonna read the motion, and we're going to vote. But Counselor McPherson, I will turn you off. I got you. Counselor Mikulak.
Thank you very much, Chair. Through you, to Mr. Krikopoulos, is it possible, do you need to have full funding for the whole project prior to asking for an RFP?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I think the, the simple answer to that is yes. I am looking at Director Stefani, she's nodding in, in full agreement, so the answer to that would be yes, Counselor.
For the, for the entire project, can we break this up into, like, two parts, where we put half on, say, 330, 350, on this budget, and then defer the further balance on, to the next budget for 2020?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'll ask, I think Angela should speak to that initially.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure in that instance how you would structure the project, because I believe the project is a full project. You couldn't break the construction piece into two. So when you're awarding it, you need to award it with the dollar, so this would be a full award for the construction, so the full funding would need to be available and have council approval with that funding.
So you're all in, all in upfront?
It's, it's making that commitment.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mayor Easton.
Mr. Chairman, before we hear the motion, I'm not clear about when the skate, if, if it isn't approved the way it's presented, what is the year of construction?
2021. Through you, Mr. Chair, to the mayor.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, through you, Mr. Chair, just to expand slightly on that, being able to secure a builder is what will take that duration and that length of time. That is not to say that we wouldn't secure them, have the money in place, and possibly do site works, but the actual building, because the, there's only two, I think, as you heard, there's only two groups that do this type of work. I don't know if it was in North America, or, or just across the country. Securing someone like that is gonna take us that long to kind of get in the hopper and be placed there. So, I think it would be safe to say, should it not be approved, we are looking at a construction of 2021, notwithstanding when the money's approved.
Counselor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Forgive me, I'm gonna play devil's advocate for a second. We have a transportation master plan coming out, and yet we're still approving transportation activities and projects without that, knowing that it's a need within the community. If, my, my thoughts are, if we're gonna wait until the Parks Master Plan comes out for any park-related projects, then all of a sudden, all of those projects that might be identified through the Parks Master Plan is going to be put onto the 2020 budget, which then also those as well may not come to fruition till 2021. So, I think this project itself has been identified as a need. And again, I think I go back to Counselor Timmer's point, that if it's a need, and I, I think it's likely to be identified in that master plan, like, I'm not sure why we would defer it when we already have a, a potential for a conditional tweak put on it, to at least delay based on that Serena Park plan coming in in totality before we go forward. So, I, it's just, it's a thought that, again, to echo Counselor Timmer's, if we're gonna ask for the money regardless, I hate to think that we're gonna end up having to wait two years midterm for something that the community has obviously put forward as a, a major project for them.
I wish I had some music to play, but. Counselor McPherson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'm, I'm just surprised at, at where this thing has got to as far as when the project is gonna be built, because, again, you know, the, the discussions that I had this week with staff were that this project was going to be built this year. And, and now I'm hearing that based on, you know, the vendor, you know, if we defer this thing, well, we're not gonna build it till 2021. So, I, I just, I'm just struggling with what, what information are we using here? I understand that, you know, there could be a risk that if we approve this thing in 20, early 2020, or we approve it through the budget, that, you know, we're up against it potentially, or possibly, with, with the vendor. I guess we're in the same boat now, you know, that, you know, we, we wouldn't have it for this year, which we, we all thought we were going to have it for this year. So, I'm just getting some mixed messages as to, you know, what are, what are we hearing? And I would, I would, I would keep, you know, with, with now what we're hearing, you know, this motion is losing any strength it had, because now it's, oh my God, we're waiting till 2021. You know, I, I just don't get it, Mr. Cao.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I'm not sure, you know, what additional comments I can make to the Counselor, other than to apologize for any, any confusion around the timing. I think, you know, you're correct. I can, I can absolutely understand your frustration in terms of, I think, coming into the, into the budget process with the, with the thought that this would be built in 2019, and now hearing, well, really, it was 2020, and then if we delay it, it's actually, you know, there's a year lag, for lack of a better word, in terms of being able to schedule and, and ensure that that build happens. I'm not sure unless staff have some additional comments they wanna make on that particular topic, how much more I can, I can offer, Counselor.
I thought that's what Mike's doing right now. This is making me dizzy. In the interim, Counselor Rinchema.
Thank you, Chair Patriva. I, I really, I mean, I agree with Counselor Russell. I don't think we need to make this conditional upon the master plan. I think we've heard enough in the community. There's been a lot of public consultation regarding the skate park. They're all aware of it. We're aware of the need. There's funding ready. I understand the need, or the concern about having the design of the park incorporate the skate park. I understand that, but I don't think we need to make it conditional upon the completion of the master plan. I would not like to see that.
Okay. Well, I'm waiting if there's any more comments from our CEO before reading the motion.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for that. No, I don't necessarily have any more comments at this particular point in your hands.
Okay, so here we go. So we've got a motion moved by Counselor McPherson, that project number 29, the Serena Park development, phase one, be split into two projects. First being the Serena Park redesign completed in 2019, and the second being the skate park be deferred to 2020 pending the approval of the Serena Park design and Parks Master Plan. Correct, Counselor? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. All those opposed? Okay. And that motion's lost. So, okay. Oh, I gotta, I gotta check, lost and sign that, do I not? Thank you. Yes. So, let's everyone step back, have a little recess for five minutes. Luke, I promise that a five-minute will be five minutes. Well, you know what? Because of the clock here, I'm gonna say six minutes. Go to the bathroom, get rehydrated, take a deep breath, and let's come back. And let's come back. Okay, let's move on. So. Well, we're gonna turn the page. And we're gonna get into transportation. Council McPherson, are you?
Next question.
Okay. Number thirty, road resurfacing and rehab program. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And for our ten-year capital plan. Looking at Nineteenth Street in Jordan. And looking at Director Graham's wonderful diagram. And I would commend Director Graham for holding firm to the four years. He's done that in the past. And I love this look at it. When we look at Nineteenth Street. We know that we're gonna do Nineteenth Street from Regional Route Eighty-One down to Fourth Street with the Jordan Improvement Project. And then we're also going to do what is Bridgeport, I believe, from Red Maple through to to the end of Bridgeport. And there's that section between Fourth Street north to Bridgeport that is in awful shape. And we're gonna have brand-new, urbanized Nineteenth Street from Regional Route Eighty-One to Fourth. I'm not sure if we're urbanizing Bridgeport, but we're gonna have two beautiful sections of Nineteenth Street. And we've got a, what is an unsafe section now that we, you know, through that S-turn. And people are looking to walk, you know, up Nineteenth Street. I'm recommending, asking that we find somewhere in this whole great project of redoing these streets that we also include that section of Nineteenth Street. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Director Graham.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. A great, great idea. I think if I could just give a little bit of additional information about the sections of Nineteenth Street and Bridgeport. So definitely, we're gonna be doing the, you know, the Jordan Village improvements. That's one of our most exciting projects for this term, which is Nineteenth Street from King Street to Fourth Avenue. And then when we go up into Jordan Station, looking at the Red Maple, the Bridgeport roads. Currently, on this map, we've anticipated that we might be ready for construction for Jordan Station in 2021. But it's ultimately gonna depend on the timing of the development that's occurring on Red Maple and Jordan Station, the Phelps Development. So depending on when the building permits and the occupancy is finished for that development, that's when we would probably do the final roadworks, the sidewalks, the curbs. So that, the Jordan Station area, that's kind of our best guess right now, subject to the development timing. And we'll continue to refine that as we go, you know, each year and as we know more about the actual development and its progress when it's finished. Because we probably, we don't wanna do those, the Red Maple, for example, if the development area is still under construction and you can damage the road. But I totally agree with Counselor McPherson. The section of Nineteenth between Fourth Avenue and Red Maple does need work. I think when we were putting this map together for committee, which is still maybe the twenty, if you will, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two is a little bit preliminary still. But we were looking at that section of Nineteenth. It probably for sure in 2023. However, there may be an option to tie it to the Jordan Village Improvement work. So kind of what we're thinking is that maybe when we finish the final paving in Jordan Village, we might be able to keep going down the section that Counselor McPherson is suggesting. So I think it's one of those roads that we're gonna see if we can fit it in. And it, but it's gonna kind of depend on the Jordan Village timing and when that construction gets completed. Because I think there's an opportunity there to economies of scale that area. So definitely take note of that suggestion. Because I think it makes a lot of sense if we can somehow make that work towards the end of the term, depending on what's happening in that area.
Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the Director. And, you know, I haven't, I haven't talked to my fellow Wardmate, but I would be willing to trade a street for that street, you know. And, you know, for getting that done and making that, you know, and it's gonna, it's going to be even more heavily populated, you know. As we see the, as we see the current Phelps Development that's going in on King Street. And then we see the, potentially the Phelps Development going in off of Red Maple. You know, this is an important street for us. So, you know, I would go so far as to offer that, that if we had to forfeit a whatever, Nineteenth Street right beside my house, I'd be willing to look at that. But we need to take that seriously. You know, I heard that loud and clear in September and October, along with sewers along there and so on. But that's another discussion. But please, if you would, take that into consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Timbers.
Thank you, Chair Pachariva. Since I have this opportunity to talk about roads, I'm gonna bring it up. And I'm sure Director Graham probably knows what I'm even gonna bring up. It's Camden Road North, Bucknell Country. Past Moyer Road, that little strip, I'm hoping we can get something in that area. There's some major, major potholes there. And I, you know, I've been asked multiple times about it. And I know I've spoke with you before too, but I just wanna bring it up again. So any comments you have on it, I'd appreciate it.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, definitely, we'll take that into consideration as well. I know it's in poor condition, so definitely be working with committee in how that looks in our four-year plan. And I know we've been a little cautious on Moyer Road to the south because there's gonna be some subdivision development occurring there. But I agree with you, the section to the north, we should try and get to that in this next four years.
Just pass the intersection.
Yep.
Very good. Thank you very much, Steve.
Counselor McLeck.
Through you, Counselor, Chair. Further to Counselor McPherson's comments, I think that that would be a terrific idea to finish off, complete Nineteenth Street, to connect the two villages and to allow for a safer way of, not just from a vehicular point of view, but from a pedestrian and a cycling point of view as well. Seeing it, it is part of the waterfront trail that the Nigga Region put out. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Okay. And I'm gonna throw in my two cents while we're just discussing this. And Director Graham, if you could, in any way, shape or form, get Dutch Lane involved in the next four-year cycle. Because then that would completely finish off that quadrant. All right? So a lot of people have big black dogs on that street, big teeth. Come 2022, I don't want them letting them out at me because that's the only street in that quadrant that's not done. And I don't think that it's that hot right now. If it's, if memory serves me, it's we've got degradation on the shoulders and potholes. So, I mean, I think that would be a great story. And, you know, through the Transportation Master Plan, too, we look at that quadranting. Hopefully, that's something that will come out of it to get the economies of scale. Okay. Counselor Rinchima.
Thank you, Chair Pachariva. I don't know if this is a road resurfacing question or a capital question or a Transportation Master Plan question. But my question is around the Vista Ridge Development and what we're doing to plan for the eventual traffic flow around there. If there's anything that we can, we can mention tonight that would be relevant to that. If there's any explanation to, about in the next couple of years, what we're doing to plan for traffic coming in and out of there. And not just Mountain Street, because that's a regional road, as we know. And we know there's probably some regional initiatives. But so through you, Mr. Chair.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. Our Traffic Transportation Master Plan that's currently underway is looking at these growth areas and looking at not just the growth today, but in the next ten years, the long-term growth in the entire community. So we are looking at how these developments are gonna impact some of the collector roads, such as Mountain Street, Stadlauer, King Street. When the developments came forward, there was traffic studies that also had those predictions and modeling done. So I guess stay tuned. And the Transportation Master Plan is gonna be looking at, you know, different intersections where we should be putting in traffic signals with the region and those types of things. And I hope that answers your question. But there's nothing specific in this year's road program as it pertains to that development. But we are planning for that in the Transportation Master Plan.
Okay, thank you. I know that we don't wanna go resurfacing roads around there. That wasn't my question. I guess I just haven't heard a lot of discussion. And I know that that development is moving along. So after budget and as Transportation Master Plan comes forward, we'll hear more about that. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Project Thirty-One, culvert rehabilitation and replacement program. Okay, and I had asked a question to Ms. Sefany about this, knowing that one of our focuses is storm mitigation and things like that. Was there any thought of, you were gonna look into upsizing these culverts to take on the water? And then at the same time, so that was more of a Dave question. But the Angela question was, because of the development taking place with the winery going in, is this, are we eligible for any DC funds with respect to these culverts?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to you. I did look into the option of putting these, having these included in the development charges. And they were not, as the road was not identified as growth at that time. So maybe Dave Graham has more to, on the other piece.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. In relation to the Bartlett Road North, which is the road that is being coshed with a winery development. The culvert needs to be replaced whether there's a winery there or not. So it is our responsibility to fix the culvert. Its useful life is totally gone. But the developer is paying their share to upgrade the road to accommodate more traffic. So I don't know if that helps or not. But so the growth is being captured in the road portion of this project.
Yeah, so the growth's being captured in the road, not the culvert. But is, are we looking at upgrading the culvert size, knowing that that's one of our focuses, you know, as the storms get greater? Is there a need to do it in this area, or is it more further upstream, so to speak?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. No, that's a great question. Because every time we replace these culverts, we do check the sizing. A lot of times what we find is they are kind of small. So we will be, or we did look at the sizing for this. And I believe we are upgrading it to a bigger diameter. Again, looking at climate change and storm conveyance, so yes.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Okay. Project Thirty-Two, guide rail assessment and installation program. Counselor McPherson. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Just through you, Mr. Chair, just further to the previous request. And just a question through to the Director. Does this change anything if we are redoing Nineteenth Street in that section? Is this off the road, or is this part of the road?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the Counselor. So this is off the road, you know, where the ravine edge is. So it's definitely a good question. And typically, guide rail, you know, they're a good ways off the road. So we don't envision, we don't anticipate it's gonna compromise the roadwork because the roadwork is gonna be within the paved area that's there now.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Chair. I just wonder if we're not potentially looking at a wider road, you know, with the redo of Nineteenth Street up south of there. From a bike standpoint, from an AT standpoint, if this guard rail is not, you know, in the way if we were to do that. And I think that makes some sense, that we incorporate some kind of, some kind of walkable, bikeable piece to that road through there. So I think it's something to maybe talk further about. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Project Thirty-Three, Green Lane Road Reconstruction Design. Okay. Project Thirty-Four, Frost Road, Bridge Number Twenty, Construction Analysis and Design. Project Number Thirty-Five, Elizabeth Street Road Reconstruction. And just, Mr. Graham, wondering if we considered that derelict section of Highland Park Drive that you brought up about adding it to the, to the project scope like we did Drake? And that, just curious.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I totally agree with you that the Highland Park Road area is in poor condition. However, as much as we like to go in and just pave it, it's got older servicing underneath that we have to replace, which is further out in there, in our capital planning at this point in time. So what we're committed to do when we do Elizabeth Street with the contractor in the area to take advantage of economies of scale, we'll do some good paving, patching work of some of those bad areas to buy us some time until we can get to that area to do, you know, a full road reconstruction.
Okay, well, and I think, too, that a lot of the issues, too, are the ditching. So that the water's sheening off and it's... So that the water's sheening off and it's like, we fix one and it moves upstream.
Okay.
So if we could have a look at that at the same time.
Definitely, Mr. Chairman, we will do that.
Fabulous. Okay, and then we're into our ones from tonight, 36.
So through you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe just to take you through the presentation. I'm not sure if everyone has copies of 36, 37, 38. Julie is bringing them. I've got them here electronically, but I did want everyone to have them in front of them. So I apologize that you don't already have them. But just again, this is a budget summary, a little bit of what you've heard. So far, we have removed $97,500 from the capital levy in terms of some of the decisions you made tonight, and that is on the corporate infrastructure piece at the beginning of our conversation. So unless I've missed something, and I know both Terry and Angela are keeping track of that, I think that's the only one at this particular point in time that's come down. So that would, of course, amend your project spend. Nonetheless, you see the breakdown here, again, as it relates to projects 1 through 35, and then the funding sources and how those are apportioned below it. A summary, again, based on projects 1 through 35, we do have a capital tax levy of $1.3 million, which is approximately $51,000 more than last year within the CPI adjustments as per council's policy. You see investments and projects aligning with what we think is the budget engagement feedback that we received. Of course, growth and how that's impacting the decisions council's making, and of course, council priorities. You see special infrastructure levy here that's been accommodated within this capital budget. And of course, we can discuss that as we move towards finalizing the budget in the coming months. That's at 1.5%, and that's proposed within this budget. And of course, the previous project highlighted Elizabeth Street, the reconstruction there, and the various funding that is set forth for that, which puts us at the need to use our own internal financing and long-term debt into, to the tune of $642,650. I did want to take a moment here just briefly to talk about, to talk about debt, to talk about long-term borrowing, what that looks like. I think as we, as we've heard in terms of the region's budget and the considerable increase in capital spending and what debt looks like. And I know I had a conversation with Counselor McPherson on debt and what that looks like. You've got some charts in your budget document. When we come back with the Financial Sustainability Plan, and again, as we look at a number of the projects that are forthcoming, you know, we heard this evening, the Jordan Lions Park and starting the design work for that. A number of you have heard me talk about BDSS and that precinct and what that potentially looks like. We, of course, have to have continued conversations with the region around the Jordan Main Street redevelopment project. And Director Graham just highlighted the importance of that project and the significance of that project this year. We will start to lay those projections out. When you look at the chart in your, in your budget documents, you see what I like to call that bell curve. As we bring on additional projects, and should we bring on additional projects, that bell curve will remain that shape. There are a number of projects that we're on and are coming off. We have long-term borrowing that ranges from five years to 10 years. And then when you look at major facilities like the Fleming Center, that is 30 years in its time horizon. And so I think in light of, in light of that, it's gonna be an important conversation moving forward. Our current projection as of this year has us at about 4%, which is significantly below the provincial average of 25 and our own kind of internal guideline that we've set of 10%. As we take on some of these additional projects, that will start to creep up. But again, I think when you look at what that chart looks like, it will look like a bell curve. It still will come down. There is some growth that's gonna be on-boarded. How that, how that bell curve looks in terms of the peaks and the stretches is something that we're gonna come back to you with more in the spring, more as we talk about financial sustainability. I think it's important that we show you some of that modeling so that you start to be informed in terms of decision-making that when we talk about these large-scale projects, what they mean, what the funding sources are, what are the offsets for those funding sources. And so I thought it was important just briefly to talk about long-term borrowing and how to use that strategically and how it differs from project to project, the duration for a roads project versus the duration for a capital community facility, for example. So next steps, we're gonna be meeting again next week. We'll review any inquiries or comments that you may have had as of today. We are gonna continue to update the budget meeting schedule. I haven't sent the email out, but there are, I think, some holds in my calendar over the next week. I do wanna, before we bring you anything concrete in nature, talk to council about the operating budget, get that input from council, use that to formulate some of, some of those areas that I think are priorities and areas of influence in terms of things that council may have heard or may want to see in that budget. So as much as we want to get the budget done, the budget wrapped up, and those are important timelines that we set for ourselves internally, I think it is important, and we heard that loud and clear, you know, last week, to have that engagement, to make that engagement with you meaningful in terms of developing these budgets. So you'll be hearing a little bit more from me on those particular items. So you've got three, you've got Projects 36, 37, and 38 in front of you. We have talked about those at various points this evening. Maybe starting off on 13th Street. I'm not gonna go back to the slide that talks about the justification and where we are. You do see a project sheet in front of you. And so Chair Pachariva, maybe I'll turn it to you to kind of guide us through these last three similar to what you did with the previous 35.
Okay. Do you want to press here?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead now.
Since we're in this section of the additional ones,
Yes.
I need clarification on a project like streetlights in Jack Simpson Park, since that whole street area was completed in 2018. All of those streets, the resurfacing, you know, everything underground. The only thing that seems to be incomplete is lights in the park. So I, what my, the clarification that I need is, how does something like that get addressed if our pattern now is to try and complete projects and, you know, the whole, get the whole project done? How would we deal with that, Mr. Chairman, through you to the CAO? Do we put that on a list tonight, or does it just come out of some internal operating funds?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to look to Director McKay and/or Graham to chime in on this. I've definitely taken note of this particular piece as it relates to Jack Simpson Park and the lighting. I've made a note of it. We can come back with more information, should we not have the necessary information tonight. But I do see some members of SMT Huddling, so Dave?
Through, Mr. Chairman, to the Mayor's question. So this pertains to the Drake Avenue and Cameron area where we went in and we reconstructed the roads, upgraded all the roads, and Jack Simpson's Park is within that vicinity. And there was a request from a resident in there to consider some park lighting. So when we did the roadworks, we've set it up so park lighting could occur off that area. And I think as we started to go into the Parks Master Plan and looking at, you know, lighting and how we're gonna provide lighting in our parks, is I believe we don't light any of our parks currently. We're trying to get some better guidance in terms of what lighting should look like in parks. But when we do the road, we've ensured electrical supply and whatnot is at that street line area to utilize, should we want to, to do lighting.
Through, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add some brief comments because it did tweak to me when I looked over at Kathleen. You'll recall that prior to the election, a little earlier this year, we looked at just a number of our community assets, vacant properties, for example, other things. We looked at as new parks are being on-boarded, what potentially we do with existing parks, are they the appropriate size? Do we make them smaller, for instance? Do we look at how we maximize, you know, both revenue and park amenities? And so I think that's also an input into this. But my, my hope and I think my commitment to you is, as we come out of the Parks Master Plan, we're gonna have all of these things addressed in terms of what goes in a community park, what goes in a, you know, in a neighborhood park, what goes in those sorts of parks. And I think there is an ability, you know, to probably address it. And there's also a wide gamut of potential options to look at, lighting as well, from things that are small and relatively inexpensive to something broader. So something I think as we, as we look at parks planning in its totality and its broad nature, we're gonna begin to incorporate. But again, as we look at this particular park and one other that we've discussed with you, that could be something that we follow up with.
I think the answer is no.
We're not going to piece, I think the answer is we're not gonna piecemeal it. We're gonna wait until the Parks Master Plan comes out. To Counselor Rinchima's question earlier about lighting in Hillary Bald Park, and it's come up with AT, that we'll have a fulsome look at this when the Parks Master Plan is complete. So not a no, just it's coming.
Through, Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say the same thing to the Mayor. Not a no, but a maybe.
If you're nice. Okay. So. So Project Number 36, 13th Street Road Reconstruction. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, you know, as I said earlier, you know, I don't see, you know, based on the money we're spending now, you know, I don't see how we can add this project this year. I would ask, through our approach to the 10-year capital plan, that we put this on the 2020 10-year capital plan with a highlighter or with a star or whatever we need to do to get that to the budget for 2020.
Through, Mr. Chairman, duly noted. And you'll be hearing, you know, from us on this in the coming months in terms of just the finalization of the design, so absolutely, Counselor.
Yeah, and again, you know, going into the, you know, the question the Mayor just asked, I think this is gonna come out of the Transportation Master Plan. You know, it's gonna identify this and it's gonna identify another of the projects, right? So we're going to have, have an idea when it comes to that. Okay, Project Number 37, Rittenhouse Road Design. This project speaks for itself. Counselor Timbers is happy, nodding, yes. And we experienced this too when we did our walk to school and identified the inadequacies on that route. So good show. Mr. Kerkopolis?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just not to miss, you know, the important detail. Half of this is funded through development charges. The other half, so, you know, I think two options potentially to look at. You see here, it's highlighted as the Infrastructure Reserve Fund, and there are some monies within that that we can potentially look at. The other is to utilize the, you know, part of the $97,500 that we've saved tonight to offset going to our savings account, as I like to call, in terms of the infrastructure levy. So again, within council's hands on that particular piece. I didn't want that to get lost.
Well, and it's funny you say that because when we talked about the cut from the capital levy, we always want to keep that at or amongst the same. So I was gonna suggest that, or maybe, you know, you can see that this fund has got some traction. Maybe it's a split between this project and topping up the infrastructure levy to 2% for this year, knowing that we've got a huge gap. Because we don't want to fall below that amount that we've set out, targeted for capital replacement. So, very good. Couple of things to consider going forward, councilors and your worship. Last but not least, Project Number 38. Again, coming completely from the Building Reserve Fund, no impact on the levy, the Jordan Arena Roof Restoration. Okay. Counselor McLeck.
Thank you, Chair. Just, I'm not sure if I get another chance or when, being new to this gambit. But doing some quick math, after these three projects were just thrown at us, my math is coming up to, the ask is just about, it's just about $14,600,000. That's what the, that's what the capital budget, sorry.
Through, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, 13th Street will not be going forward is the direction that I believe I've heard. So that will not be going forward, Counselor. In terms of Rittenhouse Road, I did hear that that will go forward. As I highlighted, there is a savings of $97,500 that we did at the beginning. And if you use the $60,000 here that potentially is required, that does leave us in a net position of $37,500 potentially that either could come off the top number, could be used as part of the infrastructure levy. And so, again.
But it will be money spent.
Minus 13th Street, yeah, that's correct, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for your excellent questions and your due diligence this evening. So there being no further discussion, we'll require a mover for the motion to receive and file this item. 7.1, the Capital Budget Review. Anyone? Counselor Rinchima? Okay, all in favor? That is carried. Confidential items, there's none. Mr. Kerkopolis, last kick at this. Any further staff comments?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I just, you know, I want to thank council for their indulgence for asking, you know, the questions that you did both tonight and in anticipation of this meeting and allowing us to prepare. And, you know, I think at the last meeting, you know, we heard where there's an opportunity for some continuous improvement, and those are some of the things that, you know, we're gonna continue to look at and make some real-time changes as we go into operating, but also as we look at the 10-year capital plan, that engagement, you know, with you, priority setting and all those things that you're gonna hear about in the coming months. So once again, you know, I want to thank council for, you know, for your patience with us as well.
Thank you very much. So there being no further business, I call this meeting adjourned.